Test, one, two, one, two. If everyone could silence any electronic devices, cell phones, whatever. And if we could please rise and salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Lemonna. Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. O'Brien. Here, Mr. Pelton. Here, Ms. Pratt, the alternate member. Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. First matter on the agenda is application A, this is special permit, A 2413 Philip Consolo, 169 Rice Avenue, requesting a special permit from the ZBA pursuant to revised ordinances section 1740040 to enable the appellant to improve a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure by renovating the first floor and adding a second floor to the rear structure located at 169 Rice Ave.
Is the applicant or any representative in the audience? They did call and say that they were coming, so can we take the next calendar number and...
Next application is A 2415 Martin Carbo, 263 Oakwood Ave, Riviera Mass, requesting a variance of section 1716260 F1 minimum side yard setback for accessory structures to enable the appellant to construct a gazebo 15.8 feet by 19.1 feet at 263 Oakwood Ave.
Is the applicant or a representative here? If you'd kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Just push that button one time.
Hi, Martin Carbo. Looking for relief for a side setback for gazebo. You know, just trying to make my house a little bit more enjoyable, you know, for the summer months. And, you know, that's how it ended up being so tight in the back, you know, with the amount of space I had.
Okay, just for the record, if you could state your address.
Yeah, 263 Oakwood Ave, Riviera Mass.
Okay, thank you. And this structure is, is it already there?
It is, yeah.
So it was...
I assumed it was just a, you know, in my yard type of thing where I could, you know...
So you're trying to do right and get a variance for it?
Exactly.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I have to ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? If there is, kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Carmen Deruza. I live at 266 Oakwood Avenue, across from Mr. Carbo. And I'm here in support. Mr. Carbo is an awesome neighbor. Keeps his property meticulous. We have a new neighborhood, it's quite nice. And I can see this gazebo from across the street. And it's aesthetically pleasing, and it looks beautiful. As a matter of fact, I wish I lived next door to him, so I could enjoy it more. So I'm here in support of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing none?
We have email on record from a Mr. Levent Berksen at 262 Oakwood Ave. And Counselor Cogliandro also sent a letter in favor of the variance.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of hearing. Any members wish to speak? And is a motion to approve on the floor? That's for roll call with all of our standard...
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to the following conditions? If the rights by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Mr. Lemonna? Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. O'Brien? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted. Next application is A 2416 Marsha Lucenta, 630 Riviera Beach Boulevard, requesting variances of section 1724010 with respect to minimum side yard setback requirement of 10 feet within the RA district and section 17.24.010 with respect to maximum principal building coverage requirement of 30% within the RA district to enable the appellant to construct a two-car garage and a handicap accessible entryway at 630 Riviera Beach Boulevard.
Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please. There you go.
My name is Marsha Lucenta. I live at 630 Riviera Beach Boulevard in Massachusetts.
Okay. Do you wish to add anything, or does the submittal speak for itself?
It does, the submittal speaks for itself.
Okay. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I would ask, are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there, the ward counselor is here, do you wish to speak?
Good evening, Counselor Angela Garino-Souaya Ward 5. I have already...
Are you already speaking as an opponent?
I am speaking as neutral. I'm not opposed to it, and I'm not for it. What I am requesting is a six-foot fence put between the two property lines because it is directly, like, point four inches from the neighbor's property line. So for it to be no issues, and I think the neighbor also wrote a letter that she would agree to it as a six-foot fence between the entire property line from the beginning of our house to the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? I just, if you have...
Do we have the letter from the neighbor?
Yes, we do.
It's in there, it's in the file.
It just says, probably about an hour ago, five hours after...
Is this structure already built?
No.
So the side of the house going down where the proposed wheelchair ramp is, there's no structure built there already?
Right now, there is a ramp that's not large enough, so it has to be extended. So there is stairs and like a small porch, and that has to be extended because it cannot handle a wheelchair. It's not wide enough. So that's why it has to be extended.
But the structure's there, it's not just the steps, if I'm looking at the right thing, there's a structure.
There's a structure there already, but it would be extended.
Okay, so a structure was built and...
Forever, I don't know, before we ever bought the house.
Okay.
The handicap ramp is already there, right?
Well, it's a, the ramp isn't there, but there's stairs and a little porch, but it's not wide enough to handle even a walker. We tried a walker the other day, too, it doesn't handle that.
Do we have pictures of the ramp?
No. Did they submit pictures with this?
It's not a ramp.
It's not a ramp?
No, there's no ramp there now.
But a ramp is going to be installed there?
Correct. There will be a ramp, and it will go to the front, from the front of the house up to that, where the stairs are. You saw from the side of the house, there's stairs, and then there's that...
If I'm facing the house, on the right-hand side of the house?
Correct.
But how wide is the ramp going to be? Is it going to cross the line?
No, it doesn't cross the boundary, no.
So it's going to be an aluminum or metal-supported ramp? A prefab-type ramp?
No, I'm looking at the contractor.
No, so you're making a ramp out of wood or metal, or is it, is it, I don't see it going all the way up to the side of the house without being supported as a structure, so...
It's wooden, isn't it wooden? Could you, concrete?
It's just a concrete ramp coming up.
Okay.
And I don't, putting a concrete ramp into an area that's already in a floodplain, that would have to go to conservation commission.
We know that part, we know that, we know it has to go, we have to go to conservation after this.
All right, because that doesn't depict the concrete, but you are going to be put in concrete. And this is a, not seeing that it's depict, but where is the, how is a car getting into this? On the side?
Yeah, this side, so you drive in and go this way.
So from the gravel driveway, you're going to just drive, take a right and drive into the garage?
Yes, I'm looking at the contractor, yes.
Then if that's the case, why does it have to be that long? What's the reason on having such a large garage? Is that just designed that way, or...
Hansley, could you?
If you want to get up and speak, if you're going to be the contractor, the question's...
Yeah, my name is Hansley McNish. So the driveway, they have, they have quite a few cars, so that's the size of the garage is to accommodate the cars to park.
But there's only one car in this garage?
No.
It's a two-car garage.
It's a two-car garage?
Yeah.
But no, it's not there yet, there's no...
Well, do you have the plan, ma'am? There's a, it looks like some type of outside, is that just a...
It's storage, that's not a garage, that's storage. That thing that's taking...
This doesn't even show a garage door on it, this is concerning me. This is a solid foundation blocking here. Am I, am I not looking at this correctly?
The thing that says that it's one-story... That's the, that was a garage, it's not a garage anymore, that says one-story. Here, take that back.
Okay.
Sorry.
Can I just see that again? I want to try to compare it to this.
We're building a garage, not... Can you project, can they project what's...
So the, the existing garage was...
Was a garage.
It was, and still, and it...
It's not now.
All right, that's already, that's already taken up, yep, okay.
There's no garage door.
But it was meant to be a garage, it was proposed to a garage.
It was below grade, and it had water in it, and so we had to fix all that, and we just closed it up instead of being a garage, because it couldn't fit the cars, couldn't fit our cars. So it's not a garage.
Okay, and now you want to go the 22 feet to propose to put two-car garage, and then go to the property line almost with a set of stairs coming down? So you're four feet off the back of the property as well? And this is just for two vehicles? That's the whole reason this is, plus a proposed office?
Yes.
Is that a roof deck on top of the garage?
It could, it could be, it could be a deck.
Yeah, here it says exterior roof deck. So it's going to be a deck, or it's not going to be a deck?
It'll be a deck.
It'll be a deck.
Yeah, virtual.
So the proposed garage is going to be just a crushed stone garage inside, because that's all you would be able to have in a floodplain area. I don't think they'd allow you to have a concrete floor, but I'm not the board, I'm not the conservation commission. So you're going lower, am I correct? The back of your yard is, it sort of goes down more, right? That I was looking at. So you're in a lower level than the existing garage that's there. So you're going down even lower into the yard, am I correct?
No.
Almost the same level?
Yeah, same level, yes.
It's actually going to be higher, because it was before, what they were saying, it was too low. It was below the flood, the flood line. So they wanted us to raise it.
For the garage, but the backyard itself will still, you know the cement pad that's there now? It would be at the same level as that, yeah, same grade where that cement pad is, though that cement pad wouldn't stay. That has to be removed. Now, right.
Yes.
There is.
Okay, my questions are answered. Is there any other members wish to speak?
All I got to say is, if you had flooded in the first garage, this one's going to be worse.
Well, we had, we did a lot of, what we did is we put a lot of drainage in, so we went through that with the conservation commission before. So there is a drainage that goes into the back, into a, whatever.
Into the conservation?
No, in the middle of the yard.
In the middle of the yard.
Right. So there's drainage in there, we've already had to do that, that's why we have all the crushed stone for all the drainage, and we have a pipe with the holes in it and all that.
Okay. Would you be willing to putting up the six-foot fence if that's proposed by us?
Yes.
I'm just concerned about even putting up a six-foot fence and how you're so tight to the property line. Was there a land survey done on this?
Yes.
By pin-to-pin, not just by looking at the plans?
No, we had the land surveyed when we first bought the home by Ott and Dwyer.
Okay, so it was pin-to-pin, so you know the exact property lines?
And the marks are still in the ground there.
Okay.
Pin-to-pin, I guess.
Right, thank you for answering the questions. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion to approve with our standard conditions, with the six-foot fence being installed up to the existing footprint of the house, or the front of the house?
So I had six-foot fence up to the existing footprint of the house, or I had the entire length, that's what you're discussing here?
If they went the entire length to the curbing, that would, they'd have to slope down four feet, just to meet the, just to meet the guidelines.
Just to the house?
The front of the house to the rear property line, so...
Yes.
To the front of the house, right.
It would be to where this is here.
Yep.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to the following conditions? The applicant shall install a six-foot fence, beginning from the front of the home to the rear property line, between 630 and 632 Riviera Beach Boulevard. If the rights of this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Riviera. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Mr. Lemonna? Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. O'Brien? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance is granted.
One question, if the conservation commission were to make them change the elevation, they would then have to come back in front of us if they wanted to change the height of that, am I right on that?
Well, it looks like they don't, they're not requesting a height variance. There's no height variance. I would imagine if they were to exceed the allowable height, then the building inspector may kick it back, but that's up to the decision of the building inspector.
All righty.
Next application is A 2417 Flow Design Architects, 50 Grove Street, Salem, Mass, requesting a variance of section 17.24.010, maximum requirement of two and a half stories within the RV district, to enable the appellant to construct a third level to increase livable square footage in an existing two-family home at 73 Amelia Place.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Darwin Fortuna from Flow Design Architects, I'm a registered architect, as mentioned, representing Tanya for 73 Amelia. So this project's a pretty straightforward project, was born back in those crazy days of 2020, 2021, and today is when we're actually pushing the project forward. Essentially, the building does not appear to be, right now, a two-story building, but the way it's designed, and the way, the way it kind of generally looks, some portions of it have access to walkout and some don't. So by the code, essentially, because more than 50% is accessible as a walkout, it's basically a story, what we would consider a basement. But what we're adding right now is living spaces that are highly required and needed by the owner. Three, three multiple bedrooms and a bathroom are the uppermost, and we are, we're essentially just walking that threshold of the 50% of the half-story, because she doesn't, she didn't need the full, the full footprint going all the way up. So it's a margin that would turn that into a, into a full story. We looked at the neighborhood, there are a couple buildings around there that also have the similar look and feel, and some of them have the full story, actually. There's no neighbors to the left, which would not be detrimental to anyone on the left, it's a cul-de-sac. And I, I'm here to have, happy to answer any questions you have, and we have Tanya here, and also the contractor, Jesus, for any questions that you may have.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor?
We have two letters on file from Counselor Janino and Counselor Cogliandro in favor of the variance.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? What's the wish? Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve with our standards?
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to the following conditions? If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. If the variance, I'm sorry, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Riviera. And the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Mr. Lemonna? Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. O'Brien? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see that the representative for our first calendar number is in the audience, could we take that up, please?
Sure. Back to the first matter on the agenda, special permit, A 2413 Philip Consolo, 169 Rice Avenue, requesting a special permit from the ZBA pursuant to section 1740040 to enable the appellant to improve a pre-existing non-conforming single-family... appellant to improve a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure by renovating the first floor and adding a second floor to the rear structure located at 169 Rice Ave.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Rick Salvath, Engineering Alliance, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant hasn't been able to obtain the updated field survey yet that the board had requested. We were gonna request a continuance to the September meeting. It's our understanding that the board council isn't available at the September meeting. We'd like to continue this matter to the October meeting if it's, that's amenable to the board.
This is a special permit, though, that would exceed our 90 days.
It would exceed your 90 days, I do have a letter here extending the 90 days. If it's mutually agreed upon, we're happy to extend the time to December 1st. I don't think we'd need that much time, but we'd be happy to extend it that far, just so you'd have plenty of time to be able to make a decision and avoid any kind of constructive issues.
Okay. It's been brought to my attention that this would fall under an abandoned and non-use because of it not being used. The non-conforming use of a structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protective status and be subject to all the provisions of the zoning chapter. So where does this fall? I don't know why it's in front of us.
Yeah, I get, well, the building commissioner certainly didn't point that out, we went to site plan review. I know it is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. I don't, I can't say whether it's abandoned or not, it doesn't look like anyone's ever lived in it. I don't know what its use is now, it looks like it's got a whole bunch of storage in it. But that was the direction that we headed in when we went to site plan review and met with the Site Plan Review Board.
Okay, and the plans that were presented were for the front structure, not the rear. So that was even more of a...
The plot plan that was utilized was the one that was created for the front structure, that's correct. That's why we're gonna get the updated survey, but the survey isn't really gonna change, it's not gonna show anything different, just isn't gonna have any proposed notes on it from the front structure, there's no changes proposed to the front structure.
Okay, seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any other proponents? Seeing in here, and I'll close that side of the hearing, are there any opponents, anyone opposed?
Angela Guerino-Suaya, Ward 5, counselor. I was in favor of this at one point, but with more information that's come to light, I cannot support this. Since the structure hasn't been used in many, many years, I don't think it's ever been lived in, I can't say for a fact, but since I've been in the point of pines for 30 years, it hasn't been. The neighbors are against it, and I have to go with the neighborhood, and I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members, any other opponents?
There's a letter on file from Robert and Geraldine McCush, 143 Rice Ave, Megan and Chris Clark, 32 Wadsworth, and Elaine Sinclair Fowler of 171 Rice Ave. There was an email from August 19th in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak from the audience? So any members wish to speak?
Yeah, so where does that bring us, Michael, since it was an abandoned unit?
It's in front of us, we could deny it based on an abandoned and non-use, and we could also deny it because they haven't submitted a plan, so the application was not submitted properly, and it's, it could be denied for that as well.
Okay.
What's the will of the members? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to deny based on the abandoned and non-use, and I would also add that the plans, we don't have a proper plan submitted. That's our call, please. Deny, motion to deny based on those two factors.
The question is always put in the affirmative, so if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit, and no vote is going to be against the special permit. The question is always read in the affirmative, okay? Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested? Mr. Lemina? No, Mr. Lopes? No, Mr. O'Brien? No, Mr. Pelton? No, and Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the special permit has been denied.
We have one more calendar item?
Application A 2418 Daniel Seabor, 810 Washington Avenue, requesting a variance of section 17.28.020 with respect to minimum parking requirements for apartment use in the GB district to enable the appellant to construct a 30-unit residential apartment building with 26 parking spaces at 810 Washington Ave.
Good evening, so you do have the presentation that will be coming up on the screen, so the viewing audience, as well as the people in the audience here, will have the opportunity to see.
Lou McCarkus, 152 Linway in the City of Lynn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. What we have on the first slide, 810 Washington Avenue, is the finished product, currently a 30-unit, 15-studio, 15-one-bedroom apartment, currently about 70% complete. We're hoping for a January 1st ribbon cutting and possibly a spring 2025 full capacity. Approximately four years ago, because of the irregular shape of the lot, approximately 11,000 square feet, and the challenges facing any developer, this board felt that the new plan represented a significant improvement over the parcel's current use and underutilization. This board also deemed that the requested dimensional relief was reasonable and necessary, given the complications associated with the parcel's shape. That decision was filed in December of 2020. Subsequent to that, the applicant attorney, Daniel Seabor, who's with us this evening, closed on the property. Since then, since that last permit was granted in 2022, three more bus lines have been added, equalling a total of seven bus lines outside the front door or within a couple of hundred yards of the building. Madam Clerk, if you could just go through a couple of the slides? Thank you. Yeah, that's the original building, many of you know, was a bakery, underutilized, 11,000 triangular lot.
Next?
Yeah.
We're gonna speed this up, because five minutes comes fast.
So that's the original permitted drawing. It remained the same when Mr. Seabor bought it, 30 units, no change of use, 15 studios, 15 one-bedrooms. At that time, 36 parking spaces were required. There was some relief there, I think 45 would have been the one and a half what was required. You seem to think it warranted the relief. Next slide, please. Yeah, the side view, Daniel and his team sort of retrofit redesigned, it's just a much, much nicer layout, the floor plan, you got four or five units that have balconies with a patio, and it's basically a three-over-one construction. We have 26 parking spots at grade, you come in through Sherman and you go out through Sherman. Daniel's also allocated, there are 17 bicycle dedicated spots under the building. Currently, there are plenty of bus routes, originally there were four, now there are seven right outside. It's minutes, not miles, from the T. You have Oak Grove, Revere Beach, and Wonderland. And let's look at some of the other modes of transportation, which we didn't have four or five years ago. Blue bikes now existed, but they're much more utilized now. Zip cars, car sharing, service on demand, and of course, now you have Uber, Lyft, Toro, and others. The updated info that we've received from the website, last month and a half, out of the 73 calls that we received, less than 50% asked for or required parking. Those are the facts from our website. Next slide. What you have in front of you is the 36 spots outlined in red of a 10, five-doubles stackers, totaling 36 spots at grade. Naturally, the L ones are elevated. What we're looking for, based on what we think is the facts, and a major part of this decision had to do with public safety. And in my investigating and my research throughout the country, not only in Massachusetts, this stack parking mechanical system is untested, it's not safe, it's not practical. It's one thing if you have a hotel and you bring the keys to the valet, he parks it, you call down and, "I'll get my car in 10 minutes, please," but for people to have to go underneath at grade, work on a stack park system, it's just not practical, it's not safe, and we don't think it's reasonable. So therefore, we are asking for your support, and I just want to touch quickly on the applicant. Daniel Seabor is a real estate investor and a developer. He could have picked 350 other cities to go to. He came to Revere, he inherited this permit. Before, his recent company, he led a project team in Somerville, where they took the Powderhouse Community School, and it won awards. Dan is a graduate of University of Michigan, he got his law degree from University of San Diego, came back to Massachusetts and received his master's in science in real estate development from MIT. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, I can entertain any questions. We're looking for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Now, seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale. My office is in Lynn, 60 Andrews Street, and that's perhaps one of the reasons I was asked to be here, because within walking distance of my office is a 10-story building with stack parking. I'm an attorney by trade and not an engineer, I have the privilege of representing another attorney, Dan. You heard Lou talk about his background, and essentially, this is about, why is this back before you? It's been before you twice before. And I would suggest to you, the reason it's back before you is a change in circumstance, and the change in circumstances are these. Dan is a proven developer, he takes on challenging sites, he works in infill housing, Cambridge, Somerville, now in Revere, that's a positive change. Lou outlined some of the other changes that are positive in circumstances, the added bus lines, the fact that there's not a demand from the potential residents, other means and modes of transportation. But there's also a change in circumstance which is less good, and just let me tell you my experience, I don't know if anybody here has dealt with stack parking. I dealt with it as a consumer. I would frequent, there's a little place in Boston on Bromfield Street called the Cafe Maliav, and the city of Boston has an elevated, what I would call an elevated parking system, but it was relatively simple, simple enough, even though I'm limited in my mechanical ability, that I knew this. I pulled in, it went up. I came back out, it came down. That was my experience with stack parking. Then I had the opportunity to see what the current status of stack parking is, and I would describe it to you this way, having been in the Caldwell, where there is a system which I think has 36 stack spaces. That system doesn't work like up and down. To me, it works more like a Rubik's Cube, in that if you drive in, it goes up, it goes over, it goes up. And so with that, it presents two challenges, I believe. One is the reliability of any mechanical system, and what happens is, if there's a problem and you're in the fourth-story, fifth spot, it only affects you, but it affects everybody else who's using the stacked parking. It brings it to a start. Most mechanical things can be repaired, but whether they can be repaired in a day or two weeks, or quickly, that's a challenge. But the more serious change in circumstances is this one, and that's, other than reliability, it's public safety. And I would suggest, if you spoke to your public safety officials in this city, you would find they have grave reservations about sending public safety personnel into an underground situation where there are stacked vehicles. Part of the challenges they have now, and God knows they have many challenges, is that they're dealing with electric vehicles. Electric vehicles present a different challenge if you're a firefighter, because they operate on this battery system. And I would suggest, if you talk to your fire department personnel, they will tell you that they're struggling with how to deal with a fire in an electric vehicle. They're concerned about sending people in, and you understand, when you have stacked parking, you have an automobile that may have 25 gallons of gasoline above another automobile.
I have to cut you off, because you almost hit three minutes, or 10 seconds.
So I would just suggest to you that safety and reliability, negative changes in circumstances, it would be reckless to disregard that and not try to adapt to what you know is a better system.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Anthony Zambuto, 87 High Street. I find myself in a precarious position advocating for relief on parking. However, I said at the council meeting the other night that I voted to allow stacked parking, and I think for the first time in 25 years, I didn't do enough homework. Stack parking is wonderful for a hotel, when professionals are running it, it works very well. It's not equipped, it's not proper for residential use, it's dangerous, it's noisy, it's a lot of things, but it, had I investigated a little further and not just listened to the so-called professionals that came up here and pitched this to us, I would not have voted for it. One of my colleagues has put in a motion to eliminate allowing stacked parking, and I said I would support that for that very reason. Now, I've looked at this building and I, in this instance, where there's 15 studios and 15 one-bedroom parking, I believe the surveys that show that they're probably gonna need half of what they will have for parking, half of those 26 spaces. So therefore, again, I'm in a, what I call a precarious situation, I never advocate for relief on parking, but in this instance, I think it's warranted, and I do support it, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Angela Guerino-Suaya, Ward 5, counselor. I do not like the stacked parking. I actually had a very bad experience with my mom. We were in the Mass General Hospital in Boston, and she's elderly, and I had my car valeted, and they put it in one of those stacked parking, it was an Escalade at the time, and they couldn't get it up because it weighed a lot, so they just had to move it up one floor and then to the right. What happened is, it got stuck. They could not get it back out, and it took about an hour and a half for the mechanic to come, and then another three hours for them to actually get it off the stacker, for me to take it home and be able to take my mom home, who's 84 years old. So I do not like them, I think they are a danger, especially when, number one, there's a lot of noise, so I don't know how the people, the residents are gonna put up with the noise from them. And then, if it does get stuck, how much time is it gonna take, and how much traffic is it going to actually cause with people coming in and out of it, and that they can't get in? And then, the third issue is, they, if you have an electric vehicle in there, they still don't know how to completely take a fire out of an electric vehicle if there's a fire. So you're creating a huge danger to the residents there, so for me, I don't like them, and I would really like for them to be taken out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, gentlemen, Mr. Chairman. Aaron Novoselski, 53, Dehome Street, Ward 2, counselor. This is not my area, but I'm bringing the reliability and public safety issue. I had a very similar situation as Counselor Suaya, and I was at the Mass General, my car got stuck, my wife is on oxygen... My wife is on oxygen in a wheelchair. We had to wait an hour and a half for our vehicle to be delivered to us. And all the issues that were mentioned are still intact. One thing that I may not have mentioned, and I believe is correct, that these folks cannot get permits for street parking if they rent an apartment. So it's only underground parking, the 26 spaces that they have, I believe it is. So I don't agree with stack parking. I'm against them, and I would ask you to allow these folks to eliminate that, that portion of their permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Do we have anything in the record? Let's read Arin's on the record first.
There's one letter from Richard J. Serino, 50, Carlson Ave, in opposition to the variance.
Okay, and he's speaking now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I know you received my letter, but...
Name an address to the record, please.
Richard J. Serino, former Ward 6 Counselor, 50, Carlson Ave, Revere. So I know, like I said, I sent my letter. I wasn't going to speak. I was going to let the letter speak for itself, but with my former colleagues getting up here, I just, I felt the need to address a couple of things. The first being the, the fact that folks who are going to be living at 810 Washington Ave won't be able to get resident parking stickers. Although that's true, as I've said before, Ward 6 isn't Ward 2. We don't have a, an MBTA station right there. These people are going to have cars. I was told four years ago, when I was a counselor, the development that was going on Washington Ave just down the street from this one, across from the cemetery, these folks won't have cars, same thing. Since I've been out of office and that building has now been occupied, I've had to call the parking department personally because people have parked on Washington Ave where they're not supposed to be parked. But in these developments, especially in West Revere, I don't care, with all due respect, bus lines are not the same as transit stations. These folks have cars. And none of my colleagues who spoke before were a part of the original discussions in 2020. And I'm not sure if anybody from Sherman Street is here tonight, but I can tell you four years ago, they didn't want an apartment building on that block to begin with. I was able to talk them down and negotiate to try to get something that was workable. And the big sticking point, like in North Revere, was parking. They don't want people parking on the street because it's already a tight street as it is. You have the Walgreens right there. I suppose folks who are going to be at 810 Washington Ave will probably end up parking, I would surmise, at the Walgreens parking lot. But, you know, again, as I said in my letter, you're going to have to approve this. There's no point in me speaking anyway, because you set a precedent last month with the North Revere development. And unfortunately, it just stinks that we're going to look back and, mark my words, people will be parking on Sherman Street, and in North Revere, they'll be parking on that street up there. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Thank you. Michelle Kelly, Counselor at Large. I have a couple of issues that I'd just like to, to point out. First of all, I think the issue here is, you're giving permitting on a project on the, on the promise and on the condition of so many parking spaces, and that's where all the permits are on those conditions, that you're going to have 36 spaces. We saw this in North Revere. Now we're seeing here, as former Counselor Serino mentioned, a precedent was set. These are expensive to put in. I don't particularly care for them. But nevertheless, it was assumed that that building was going to have so many parking spaces. I met with the residents of Sherman Street on Saturday morning at 10:30. Several of them are very concerned and very upset that possibly the developer will be allowed now to have, to reduce and have only 26 spots. Their concerns are that they live on a very congested street. Despite the fact that they know these vehicles will not be issued resident parking stickers, they're afraid that the cars will park on the street. In addition to the congestion, this is a street that is, gets extreme flooding. They, the residents told me that the flooding has been exacerbated after the development of this building. And it puts the burden and the onus on them, that in the event that there is an overage of parking and the vehicles end up on their street, they are now the ones that have to call traffic or the police or 311 to have the vehicles removed. So those were their concerns. I was the counselor who actually am requesting and motioning that the stackers are no longer required, permitted or permissible in the city. I believe they looked good on paper in an event to create more parking, but if you've already have two examples of developers that promised upfront that they were going to put these stackers in, they get all their permits, they move forward only to say, oh, no, you know what, we're not going to put them in now, citing issues of safety, citing issues that the building is in a 100-year floodplain. These issues were all known at the forefront when the promise was made to put these stackers in. I understand the next building that promised them is 881 Broadway. I'm assuming that they're going to come forth and do the same thing and say that they won't need the stack, they won't be putting in the stackers either, which will, again, lead to a lesser amount of parking that they originally agreed to when they were getting all their permitting. So I'm not sure where this leaves us, other than we, I think, going forward, I would ask this body to be very mindful of setting precedents in this regard, because it seems like we created a loophole here, and hopefully, my motion by prohibiting these will close that loophole. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll close outside of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
Yeah. To go back on what you said, I had the same experience in New York two weeks ago, and I went to a garage. I didn't know it had stackables, they just took my car. Well, it took me two and a half hours to get my car back, and never again will I park in a stack. And for people that are rent, for renters, if you're going to rent an apartment in a building that you know you're not going to have parking, you're not going to rent in that building. If you have a vehicle, you're not going to rent in that building. You're not going to get a resident sticker. You're not going to have a place to park. You have to be a moron to rent out of that building. You go searching for a building that wouldn't park in. I mean, that's my first inclination. I wouldn't do it. I would never.
Any other members? What's the will of the members? Motion to approve with our conditions, which would remain no parking, no resident parking, and so on.
Shall the Zoning Board of Appeals grant the relief requested, subject to the following conditions? The property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere's residential and visitor-on-street permit parking program. If the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and planned in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the City of Revere, and the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Mr. Lemina?
Could we just, if we had other restrictions on the prior one, could they stay with it other than the stack parking? I'm not sure if there was. Did you think you got everything?
If you'd just give me a second, I can pull up the prior decision. There was another condition. The restrictions and conditions listed in the letter from the Economic Development Director of the City of Revere dated November 18, 2020, on file with the city clerk, shall be adopted herein. On the motion to grant the relief requested, subject to those conditions. Mr. Lemina?
No.
No, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
No.
No, the variance fails. No further business, Chairman.
No further business. Our next meeting will be September...
Sorry, September... September 28?
No, 25th, 25th.
Excuse me, September 25th.